Well, you're hearing right there an excerpt from a performance of the Raven Clan Singers on Indigenous Peoples' Day here in the city of Seattle. Seattle adopted the resolution declaring the second Monday in October as Indigenous Peoples' Day in 2014, an opportunity to celebrate the cultural and values of Indigenous people in our region, and it always falls in the beginning days of the city's budget process. So how are these values reflected in the mayor's budget proposal? What's the city council going to do? And what's it going to hear with its first public hearing on the budget this week? Plus, how will a city proposal to help storefronts dealing with vandalism work in your neighborhood? Plenty to discuss here on Seattle News Views and Brews, Your Coffee Break Political Podcast. I'm Brian Callanan. I'm a host on Seattle Channel. The views expressed here are my own, and I am joined by none other than David Cromer, transportation reporter for the Seattle Times. And David, I have been avidly following your Mariners play by play, if you will, on Twitter. Not only did the Mariners beat some literally impossible odds to beat the Blue Jays in game two of that wild card series, and take it, but were you serious that you saw a pod of orcas swim by when Adam Frazier drove in what would be the winning run? Tell me.
Yeah, I was serious. There was coming back from covering Jill Biden, and so I had to, I had to be listening to the game on the radio. So I was on the top deck and the Cal Raleigh was on second. And then right before Adam Frazier's hit, the person, the captain came over the intercom and said, if you look at some more off to our side, there's some pot of orcas. And lo and behold, there they were. And then Adam Frazier got his hit and pulled ahead. It was kind of a.
That's so cool. Even, even Mother Nature was on our side. J Pod meet J Rod. That's a, that's a great connection there, man. I'm glad you're able to check that out. Thank you as always, David, for joining me here. Thanks to our listeners. Thanks to City Grind Espresso, our background noise sponsor for the audio podcast on the first floor of City Hall. Thanks also to our patrons. We had Alex join us last week. Thank you, Alex. Hoping to get support from more of you too. Alex is part of our mug club at the $10 level, so we sent him one of our coveted Seattle News Views and Brews coffee mugs. And check out the mug shot of the week he sent us right in front of a house he's renovating, literally tons of timber and steel, he tells me here. And if hot coffee in this podcast help you with that job, well, more power to you, Alex. Thanks again for your support. The rest of y'all, please become a patron. Check out Seattle News Views and Brews on Patreon. Finally, a big, big thanks to Converge Media. The video of the podcast airs on Converge Wednesday nights at seven. All right, let's get things going with right here, right now. All right, we are releasing this podcast in the second week of October, and October 11th, 5:00 PM at City Hall marks the first of three public hearings on the budget, the city's budget. You can check out the proceedings in person at City Hall for the first time in three years, or you can listen online. And David, we talked about some of the big issues with the mayor's $7.4 billion budget proposal last week, such as restoring some funding to the police department, using Jumpstart payroll tax dollars to fill a $140 million budget gap, and not giving human service workers the raises Bruce Harrell supported as a council member three years ago. But my question, I guess, at this point is, what do you think we're going to hear at this first public hearing on the budget this week? Who shows up? What are they going to be talking about? Some thoughts about this?
Yeah, I mean, I think these public hearings, a lot of times you get, it seems like you kind of tend to get folks who support, say, less spending on the police. You kind of, you know, historically, you know, council member Samon has been really good at turning out supporters to these things. When you get a more kind of leftward tilt on the public comment, you know, not, that's of course, not 100% true all the time, but as far as leanings go. So I would expect to hear, I would expect to hear a lot of people pushing for restoring the, the raises to service workers, you know, human services workers. I'd expect to hear people kind of criticizing police, the police budget. You know, and I think there's going to be a lot of criticism from the left just because it is, you know, this isn't going to be a budget that's going to have big splashy new investments because of that budget hole that you, that you talked about. But at the same time, there are obviously still a lot of needs in the city. And so that's going to cause some frustration, I think. So yeah, I would, I would expect human services and police come up quite a bit.
Yeah, yeah. And Jumpstart, what's happening with that money too. Yeah, I saw an interesting piece about arts relief funding in the Seattle Times. This funding has actually been reduced by about $3 million in the mayor's budget proposal. A lot of pandemic relief funding has essentially run out here as the bottom line, but there is some still money, still some money out there for individual artists, not as much for organizations. And David, I'm just struck by the fact, looking at this with a larger lens, if we can, as much as we'd all like to just turn the light switch back on and come back from pandemic, back to normal, there are some parts of the city of our culture that may seen some long lasting, maybe even permanent effects from the pandemic. Some thoughts about that piece of it too?
Yeah, I mean, this was always going to be the challenge with a lot of emergency funding coming in from state federal sources is eventually it would start to run out. And it's, you know, I think a lot of the logic behind that funding at the start was that this was this sort of temporary period that we could get through. And once it was done, you know, then.
It was done.
Kind of return to normal. You know, I, I think that it's, it's true that the virus is not nearly the threat that it used to be, but also I think what was underestimated about a lot of that was people's change of habits, that people got used to what they were doing. Some people obviously are still nervous about the virus, but I think almost more than that, people's lives have just been kind of more reorganized around their homes. So that means maybe fewer people going out to see arts. My colleague Paul Roberts had a story about how office occupancy is basically not budged at all. I mean, I remember four or five months ago, maybe at this point, the Downtown Seattle Association was predicting 70% office returns at this point, and we're still at 35%, which is hardly any different than when they made that prediction. So, you know, it's just, I think we're seeing this on a global level, but just transitioning back to quote, "normal" has just been a lot more awkward. And, and so then that comes up against sort of government's unwillingness to continue to fund emergency measures in perpetuity.
Right, right. And one last budget piece here, looking at this, a few outlets have reported on this. Mayor Harrell would like to put $1 million towards a pilot program for ShotSpotter or a similar technology here. This uses acoustic recordings to pinpoint areas where shootings are happening. The mayor supported this as a council member a few years ago, and he's trying to respond to a rash of gun crimes in Seattle. But a lot of research shows this type of technology is not always reliable. The ACLU, of course, has some concerns about how this type of surveillance, audio surveillance, how this would be used as well. Any shots on this spot shooter here? Again, $1 million isn't a lot of money in the budget, but this program has some interesting issues surrounding it.
Yeah, I remember going to a press conference, I think it was in 2015 in Rainier Valley, where Ed Murray was the mayor, and I think Bruce Harrell was there, talking about ShotSpotter. And it just seems like kind of one of those things that never quite goes away. I mean, a lot of that is because Bruce Harrell is still in City Hall, and he's always been in favor of this program.
Still lives in South Seattle. Yeah, keep going.
Yeah, exactly. So, you know, it's, it's, it reminds me of the body cam thing, which seemed to take forever to happen. And, you know, even now that body cams are out and deployed, there's a lot of criticisms about how effective they actually are, their purpose. And I think it's the same with, basically anytime you introduce technology, a sort of mechanized form of law enforcement that raises concerns from the similar concerns around, you know, biased policing, do the algorithms, you know, send more cops to historically overpoliced areas? Does it work? And, you know, and then of course, the other side of this is we've seen a lot, a lot more shootings than we have.
Right.
And that is an obvious point of concern. So there's a reason why this debate keeps coming back up and why it hasn't really gone anywhere, because it's just sort of unstoppable, unstoppable force in Bruce Harrell and an immovable object in, you know, ACLU and other community representatives with concerns about it.
Yeah. And then behind all that, a trend in shootings that, again, our city is trying to do something about. This is something that the mayor is proposing, and I think we're getting to hear a lot about it during the budget hearings here in the next week or so. I wanted to touch on one last issue, just kind of a long lasting impact of the COVID pandemic here. Some changes that happened to the city's design review process for buildings that may become permanent here. Hannah Krieg writing about this in The Stranger. So the idea here is that the city's been trying to speed up this review process, especially for affordable housing projects. But the deeper issue, David, is the way I see it at least, how the official end of the pandemic state of emergency affects city policies. So the hope is to avoid having any sort of lag time between the end of those pandemic related emergency orders and when new policies, possibly similar to those emergency era ones, go into effect. And the city's laws say you can keep these COVID related policies in place for 60 days after the end of the civil emergency. But that's my big question here, David. The state of Washington has declared the state of emergency. It's going to be done on October 31st. I don't think the mayor is going to lay that same date on the council right now. Feels too soon. But when do you think the mayor will make the call to end that state of emergency? And how's that going to impact from some of these different policies? A lot of moving parts here.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know when he'll declare the end of the state of emergency. I mean, Governor Inslee was under a lot of pressure. I mean, mostly, you know, not, he wasn't really ever facing a vote. I mean, he, this caucus, Democrats were not ever going to take a vote on the emergency order. But, you know, going into the election and all that, it was a big Republican talking point that basically Governor Inslee had usurped total authority via the emergency process, and they were pushing him to repeal it. Mayor Harrell is not facing that. I have not heard any sort of push by the council for him to repeal the state of emergency. You know, Seattle has a history of endless states of emergency. I think we are still technically under a homeless state of emergency.
That's right, since 2015.
Declared in 2015. So, and you know, it's not like, it's not like Mayor Harrell is declaring martial law or anything, or using anything like, you know, sending jackboots onto the street in response. So, you know, I just don't see a lot of pressure on his part to end the state of emergency. So I would think that they, they kind of want to get their ducks in a row about all these policies before making that declaration, so they're not kind of racing against the clock to figure all that out. So my hunch is they'll kind of figure that out first and then end the state of emergency. I don't know, I, you know, at this point, I don't know what would need to change exactly, because as we just talked about, you know, the virus while more under control, obviously things have not returned to normal. So it's kind of, yeah, I don't, I don't know kind of what tangibly would need to change at this point if you want to repeal that.
Yeah, difficult to draw that bright line there, but I know a lot of council members, Dan Strauss is one, Councilmember Lewis another, really trying to make sure that some of these policies that went in place that seem to be a good idea. I look at things like outdoor street cafes, et cetera, try to make sure all the different laws are in place such that these, these different pieces can continue into the future in a seamless sort of a way. So again, something we're going to be tracking here over the next several weeks here, as the council works its way through the budget, and as we work our way through deciphering what they're doing. So up next here, a new storefront repair fund launched by the city of Seattle to help businesses dealing with vandalism. Well, it's in place right now. How is this going to work? What impact will it really have? We're going to learn more on, now hear this. Well, the city of Seattle launched a $2 million program called the Storefront Repair Fund last week, providing $2,000 grants to stores needing to deal with broken windows and other vandalism over the course of the pandemic. The announcement came in the U District, which just the weekend prior had a shooting outside the Flowers Bar, right there on the Ave, injured four University of Washington students. Mayor Harrell recognized that shooting, said this storefront repair fund is another tool in the city's approach to keeping neighborhoods safe.
We believe in a comprehensive approach to public safety. Where economic development and beautification and creating welcome, welcoming, activated spaces becomes part of our critical strategy.
Okay, so applications for this funding open on October 18th. It's meant for small businesses, less than $7 million in revenue, fewer than 50 employees, business owners of color, women owned small businesses will be prioritized, but when this money's gone, it's gone. That's what's happening here. But David, I just wanted to talk about the whole broken windows theory related to public safety. So much has been written about this since it was first espoused by James Wilson in 1982. He's the criminologist, the criminologist behind this, saying basically areas with broken windows invite and encourage more serious crimes. But I've read so many critics, and I know you have too, a lot of respected academics who would say the evidence doesn't really bear that out. And if you crank up broken windows policing, it can actually have a racially discriminatory impact. So don't get me wrong in this, folks. I want those windows fixed. I know store owners do too. But David, how much can you connect a program like the storefront repair fund to public safety? This just seems like a debate that has been going on for decades.
Yeah, it has been, and you're right. I mean, there hasn't, I mean, I think there are some nuances there that sometimes gets lost, and you kind of alluded to that, which is there's a difference between, you know, fixing broken windows and trying to make a neighborhood look nicer and sending a greater police response to crack down on low level crime, which I think kind of fits into that same umbrella of broken windows policing. This seems more the kind of former, which, you know, if you're a storefront and you need some help, I'm sure it's a welcome announcement, you know? I remember talking to city attorney Anne Davison on the campaign trail though, and she, she really, I mean, she never called it broken windows policing, but basically endorsed the idea. I mean, that, that was a big part of her campaign, which is that by allowing graffiti and some disorder to proliferate, proliferate in the city, you are seeding, seeding an environment to allow for higher level, you know, murders and things like that. That's why, I mean, that, because, you know, it was often.
That resonates with a lot of people. I know that.
It does, yeah. And, and you know, it was often, she, she talked a lot about murder and assault and sexual assault on the campaign trail, and it was often pointed out that, you know, the city attorney doesn't, doesn't have any jurisdiction over all of those things. Her connection though was, you know, as city attorney, I can kind of crack down on low level disorder, and that therefore will prevent more serious crime, which is, again, she never called it broken windows policing, but it's basically the, that theory. And so, you know, I, I don't know what the, I, like you said, the evidence isn't strong in support of that. But I do think it is a salient political move sometimes. People like, in an intangible system, in a, in a issue that can feel sort of big, going out there and fixing windows and promising that it's going to, you know, improve public safety is, there's, you can take pictures of it, you can put it on local news, you know? It has some political salience. So I'm not surprised that it is still a focus, even if, even if the evidence isn't always strong, that it actually leads to reductions in serious crime.
Right, right. And I mean, I guess I have to say, I think there's something to the whole concept of creating an environment that is safer. I know I've talked to different police officers about that. When it comes to, okay, let's make sure you don't have these, you know, tall hedges next to your house that people can actually hide in and break in more easily, things of that nature. When you actually fix, fix up a neighborhood in this way, and I think a lot of store owners are going to be going after this, when you're able to fix up a neighborhood in this way, I think it's something that at least puts a very public view on it, a very physical and visual kind of representation of what the city is trying to do. Because I think Mayor Harrell has been saying, all right, when we start taking the plywood down, what goes back up? And I think that's the big question. That's kind of this whole concept of recovering from COVID writ large that he's, that he's looking at here too.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's right. You know, it would be, you know, the, the underlying issues here when you're talking about crime and in Seattle are, go much deeper than some broken windows, of course. And I, you know, to be fair, I don't think, I don't know that anyone is arguing otherwise that this is the sole response to some of the public safety issues. But, you know, I do think that's another criticism is that it kind of, it's, it's treating a, treating a symptom, not, not the cause.
There we go. There we go. That's a great, great observation there. But I do know a lot of business owners will be benefiting from this. So we'll see how that goes out again, that rollout happening on October 18th. And when the money's gone, it's gone. So make sure you make that application if you're a small business, business owner who's interested in this. David, I wanted to talk about one other issue that has a connection to criminal behavior, if you will, here. And this is the idea from President Biden, who has made a decision to pardon thousands of people nationwide for simple possession of marijuana, calling on governors to do the same. Doesn't look like that'll mean major changes here in our state. Governor Inslee started this pardoning process about three years ago. But I think importantly, David, the president also said he's directing the US Attorney General, the Secretary of Health and Human Services, to review how marijuana is scheduled under federal law. I just wanted your take on how big this announcement was from the president. Where does it take us on this drive by some advocates to declassify marijuana as a Schedule One drug alongside heroin and LSD, but ahead of fentanyl and methamphetamine? What do you think about that?
Yeah, it's, you know, it's interesting. He was talking about simple possession. And I, I didn't, my sense is there are really not that many people in federal prison for simple possession of marijuana.
It can stop people from getting jobs and things of that nature. Yeah.
Yeah, so that, that's real. So as far as, you know, if, if your goal is to, you know, reduce mass incarceration, I don't know that this is going to do very much, but it, I think that the move to consider reclassifying marijuana could make a difference at the state level for sure. You know, we've heard that as a complaint for a long time. I think, you know, there's a sort of intangible political aspect to it, which is a signal that the federal government doesn't care that much about marijuana anymore.
Not as much.
Which I think is, is setting a tone. You know, in, in Seattle, I think you're right, in Washington State, I don't know that it'll make that much of a difference, you know, especially after the Blake decision, the Supreme Court decision, which basically cleared all drug possession charges.
Yeah, and, and the legislature had to respond to that to kind of do some extra work on that. But yeah, keep going. The Blake decision in our state was a big one.
Yeah. So no, I don't know that it makes that much of a difference at a state level. And, you know, I, I've seen arguments that it doesn't even make that much of a difference at the federal level. But, you know, I think, I do think it's the first time, you know, even Barack Obama never really considered making changes of this level when he was president. So it's really is the first time we've heard a president come out so strongly in support of basically deprioritizing marijuana as a thing to enforce. And there's, you know, even if, even if the tangible effects of that are sometimes hard to quantify, I mean, that's, that's real. I think that's, that's a significant move and quite the change from even 10 years ago.
Right. I really do wonder though, what, what happens on a state by state level? Because Biden was calling on governors to do the same and go down this path. I read the governor of Tennessee saying, yeah, we're not going to be issuing pardons here. Arkansas's governor says, well, we need to take these possession cases seriously on a case by case basis. Again, David, the president is talking here, but, but who's listening? And any thoughts about that piece of it?
Yeah, I, it's, I think it's, even if, I mean, we've seen examples in the past where a Democratic president was offering basically free money for healthcare and governors weren't taking it because it was a Democratic president and they didn't support the policy. So I don't know that, don't know that this will overcome deep seated partisanship. That said, you know, I, I think actually marijuana is a pretty bipartisan issue at this point. Maybe not perfectly split, but I remember looking back at 2012 and some counties that went, you know, two thirds for Donald Trump voted in favor of legalizing marijuana in 2012 in Washington State. So I don't know that it's anyone's priority anymore at this point. So, so I think that there's the, the opportunity for a bit of bipartisanship around this. I don't know that any political figure is going to risk, any political figure on the right is going to risk looking to be supportive of something that the president is doing. And so, you know, to your point, I don't know. I think the people who are most likely to listen have already probably taken up this issue and who aren't, maybe haven't, we'll, we'll see though. But like you said, you know, the, the biggest effect could be for people who have, have records. Then that, that is not insignificant because it doesn't, you know, if you've got a criminal, if you've got something on your, on your record, it's not, you know, a landlord or a employer isn't going to probably dive into the nuances and figure out it was because you had a joint or whatever. They're just going to see the criminal charge and that is going to make it a lot harder to get services and employment. And so, you know, that could be significant.
Yeah, I think it impacts international travel in some cases. So it's, it's, I think there's some, there's some real meat to this. I'm interested to see how this plays out. I'm interested to see how other states respond to it. But as we go through an election process here coming up in November, I'm not sure if this one tops the list out there, but I think in an interesting twist in terms of what the president is talking about right now. So thank you for that, for that discussion, David. All right, coming up next, why are the traffic deaths in Pierce County so much worse than what we're seeing in the rest of the state? David has some research to share with you. You're really going to want to listen to. It's coming up on Transportation Talk. So David, you recently wrote a story for the Seattle Times about traffic deaths in Pierce County being markedly higher than most of the state. And this has been a crisis all over the state since the, or during the pandemic here is when it comes to traffic fatalities. But Pierce County really did have some big problems here. So why there? What's happening? What did you find out?
Yeah, I mean, it stood out to me because, well, I mean, while not, while not in hard numbers, Pierce County represents a disproportionate amount of traffic deaths. And that wasn't always true. You know, 10 years ago, it was pretty proportionate to the rest of the state. And so what we've seen is over the last 10 years, just much faster increases in traffic deaths in Pierce County than anywhere else, even as the state and the whole country are seeing increases. And, you know, it's a, anytime you're sort of trying to figure out why traffic deaths have been going up, there tends to be some nuance because it's probably a lot of reasons. Pierce County though, I mean, the, still even despite that, still comes across as an outlier. And, you know, I think an interesting read on this is that the county really was laid out in a way where you have these pretty large highways that were at one point sort of designed to get people out to far flung rural communities or ex-urban communities, or whatever you want to call them, that as, as this region has grown so much, those highways now have whole communities that live along them and people live in single family homes. And, and so you just, I mean, this is true to a certain extent, every, in a lot of places, you know, I think of Aurora Avenue is kind of the same deal. You know, you could go to any place and find examples of this, but it just so happens that Pierce County, you know, you think of places like Puyallup and Auburn. And, you know, I was talking with a mother in Parkland and, you know, you can, you can think of a lot of communities that aren't, that are sort of on little islands of their own, and the way in and out of them is through these not quite highways, not quite streets.
Pretty close, yeah.
Five lane roads. And so you just have a lot of, basically, you know, as we know in Seattle, Aurora is the deadliest street. And basically you just have a lot of auroras in Pierce County. And that, that makes sense as a diagnosis, and it's also means that it's a, it's not necessarily so easy as just, you know, putting up some more PSAs or whatever to get people to slow down. I mean, you're talking about a pretty deeply ingrained structural issue in the county.
Right. And I was going to say, in terms of what can different local governments do, I imagine this is one of those stories that you run into where it can be kind of frustrating because you want to provide some hope here, but it goes beyond, okay, we'll put an extra stoplight here or whatever else. I mean, it's literally this growth that is happening throughout our area is bringing in these different communities close to these major roads that are so fast. I mean, what were your thoughts about that? And talking to some different government officials about this, because I think they feel a little stuck on this one too.
Yeah, no, absolutely. I mean, you know, there, there are things you can do, you know, lower speed limits and you could, but, but I think what we're talking about here is measures that are also tend to not be very popular with, with people trying to get, you know, into Tacoma or whatever, which is kicking away lanes, adding more lights, you know, making sort of structural changes so that the street just does not, it's just not conducive to driving quickly. Because you'll hear this over and over, you can set a speed limit, but if the road is laid out in a way that makes it easy to speed, people are going to speed. It's, people just kind of default to the road's design. And so if you want to make changes, you have to change the road's design and make it so it's less comfortable to speed. That, you know, again, that's not always going to be a popular thing with, with people because traffic even on these roads right now is not good. It's, it's bad. And this would probably mean more of it because people have built their lives around using these roads to get where they need to go. So that's what the Pierce County Council was talking about taking on. And, you know, I think they're pretty well aware that it's, it's challenging. You know, it also means if you're going to make these changes, you know, I didn't touch on this maybe enough in the piece, but it means that if you, if you're a city, you're in Pierce County and you want to make a change to a road, you want to make a minor change, maybe you just want to change out a signal, that, that in theory is not going to be allowed anymore, that if you make any changes, you have to make a whole host of changes to make that area safer, which of course is more expensive, more time consuming. But that's what we're talking about as far as what it'll actually take to, to slow down the increases in deaths there.
Wow. Yeah, I mean, we're talking about things that we've been discussing, discussing here in Seattle on Aurora, on Rainier Avenue South. I mean, there's, there's a lot of different pieces here involved. So very interesting to see Pierce County going on and working on that. And I really thank you for that piece, David. That was a real eye opener here. That was a real eye opener here, but we need to start wrapping up the show. And here we are, David, on the brink of something potentially incredible with the Mariners now in the AL Division Series with the Astros. But I got to admit, I had some sticker shock looking at ticket prices for the M's home[1718.26]